Thursday.
I don't see him in the waiting room. There she is.
She said she had COVID, yeah.
Darcy can you put Steve?
It's not ill.
You did that thing.
Mm-hmm. He actually should be able to do it himself.
Darcy, can you hear? You have you, looks like you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Mute, okay, I'm unmuted.
Oh, good, all right.
I can't see anything, but.
Can't see, yeah, I'm trying to get the video started, I don't know what's. Camera's on, it says we're recording.
Start video. Whoops.
What is that, is that you?
Yeah, we don't wanna see me, holy shit, I'm in my bathrobe and everything.
Well, just the camera, let it do it, let's see.
We'll just, we'll just turn it. Oh.
See where.
Start video, right there.
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh.
Yeah, now I can see you.
Yeah.
All right. Technology, not my storm suit. All right. Okay. We're gonna do the whole, whole business that we're carrying over for. Everyone get the minutes? Right, I think we're ready to start. Someone else trying to get in?
No, no, I was wondering if you should have these people identify themselves for Darcy. Anyway.
Yeah, when they speak, yeah. Let's see. All right, we'll begin, this is the November ninth twenty twenty three meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. Uh, we've got a forum here. The only member that is absent is David. Can't remember which of you was the voting member, the alternate at the last time we did this. I think Bonnie was doing that, though. Because, yeah.
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 So we'll have Rick as the voting member tonight, you were the voting member the last time, so.
Full-time member.
Hi, oh, you're full-time.
That's right, yes.
So you would be David, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Sorry.
Bring me up to speed again. How about the minutes of the October meeting, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the October minutes as presented.
Okay. Uh, are there any corrections or additions that any member has? There being none, all in favor of accepting those minutes, minimum minutes. It is unanimous. Okay. Um. Looking at the agenda, I believe the matter from Thomas and Kelly Quinn has been withdrawn, is that? Okay. Did they send a letter, Darcy?
No, uh, Rick gave me a call or an email or something and said that they were withdrawing their application.
Kind of heard something through the grapevine that that might be the case, but I wondered if they did anything official.
Uh, I can double check with Andy.
Um, I think we're okay, but they're not here.
I saw TJ tonight, TJ's in. They have to pull the applications, yeah.
All right. So, um, why don't we take, um, the matter that Paul group is here on? So this is, um, an application for a shoreland permit for some renovations to outage that is non-conforming in terms of setback from Lake Cottinwagen. We had a site visit last Thursday. Um, there were quite a few people at that site visit, well, we probably for the record should indicate who was at the site visit? Dave, you were there. Larry, Bonnie.
I went prior to the meeting, not to that.
Prior, I was there. Phil Monigle was there from Cogged East Sea Watershed, Ray was there. And I was there along with, um, Paul and
The owner.
and the owner. Um, so they wanna do some work in the foundation? They will remove.
Yeah. He can see what he wants to do, but, uh, concrete peers that can stabilize. Nobody on the structural supports of the building underneath. Now, if I may. Don't get too excited.
I've got five applications based upon the site visit, I made some revisions to the plan to incorporate Bill's uh, suggestion for erosion control.
I'm getting excited about.
Oh, you are.
I want to go over what you, what you changed.
Well, first of all, most obvious is I made suggestions uh, who are placing so erosion guard.
All right, I'm saying that theory of your bed. All right. So I'm showing and recommending, it, it's gonna have to be adjusted depending upon contractor and soil disturbance and so on like that. But basically what I'm saying is on the west side of the building, it's going out four. And on the eastern, eastern side of the lakeside is incorporated.
Yes.
Yes.
Because both.
Goes this way.
Yeah, because they both go that way. If there needs to be expanded a little wire, but I think that will. I, I think that will incorporate any erosion or the, and that coming off the. I'm not recommending the geotechnical fabric underneath it because you want the water to infiltrate it to the soil, so. The other revision to the plan is on note nine is to take out the removal, my reference to silt fencing and to specifically mention the erosion control mixture. And filter socks, which are cited the specific pages and I know Bill's seen this, but here's copies of those pages. For that, and I sent a copy of the plan and that, so hopefully that gets, I trust that will get passed on to.
All right, yeah, good, yeah, cuz originally had erosion.
Yeah, I had it go all around.
Yeah, I know, it makes no sense.
Yeah, but I put it on three sides. I mean, I did put it up to three sides because there is the opportunity, particularly working.
Actually, one and a half, like two and a half.
Yeah, but I'd rather err on the side.
Right.
That looks a lot better.
And taking it, and taking it, so those are the only revisions there, I think.
And the deck's gonna, the two front decks.
The two front decks.
Will be removed.
Who are removed.
Then you're gonna do the, uh, there'll be stairs on the side.
Yeah, I hate it.
On the north side, there'll be stairs.
He's gonna say where, because he's, he hasn't provided me with like he, he, for the owner expressed to Dave. He's going to, the two sliding glass doors on the lakeside are going to be removed and just put windows in there. There will be an egress point put on the northerly side of the building, but he hasn't said where.
He said it might be that front window, but.
Yeah, so since you are, so without knowing where. But I think that can be handled at the codes officer level when he comes in for a building permit. But I think those are, those are the only substantial changes to the plan. I think that's taking in the comments made at last week's meeting, could incorporate.
So we have to determine that the building has its load weight and it's not practical to set back to the fullest practical extent. They are gonna remove the, the deck. It's gonna be a benefit, probably.
Yeah, the deck does serve a little bit of a purpose right now by, um, absorbing the impact of any runoff from that left side or the south side runoff. But Paul has got in there now, a good chunk of rock, stone, believe. So.
It looks to me as we go back sort of, uh, westerly that the slope increases. And also you start to get into the area where there's a power line coming through. Is that?
Yeah, that's accurate, yeah, it's, it's terrace back there, if you leave the building there, there's a width there of maybe twenty feet, something like that, before you go up a slope to the terrace on which the, uh, power line, which serves all residences in Bog Cottinwagen.
So from the board perspective in terms of relocation, what, what do people feel about?
I'm fine with it, where it is. I think you do more harm trying to move it back at this point.
Given the site condition, the condition of the building.
They're gonna take, have to take some of that slope away.
Yeah.
May I ask a question? I, yeah, it's, uh, um, I thought, yeah, moving a building back to the maximum extent practical, 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 a practical goal was, um, it shall be moved, um, if you're gonna be putting a full, a new foundation under it, um, or moving it at all, but if you're simply shoring it up uh, with new piers. I, I don't know if that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that, I don't know if that rise raises to the.
Right level.
There's hardly any earth moving going on, you know, it's just, just stabilizing the structure. You're not putting a new foundation under it. Um, I, I, I don't have that in my memory right now, but I've done some.
No, you're, you're right, it's not in there.
Put a full foundation.
Or an addition.
Or an addition.
And that's really.
This is in the checklist for the planning board.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's going through the checklist. Even in place and you're not doing anything, you're not adding any new floor space or any new square footage for living, I think it's more, I think that's, um, I don't think it's a matter of moving it. Now, now, I, I had to keep that in mind after our site visit because I had to remind myself that there's not a lot of earth moving going on under the building. You're, you're removing decks and you're putting in new piers.
And the footprint, yeah, the footprint isn't increasing.
Right, so, so the erosion isn't gonna be a serious issue.
On your point. My memory serves me right, in the language, it states foundation. If a foundation is gonna be involved. Doesn't get into anything else, it just so plainly said foundation.
Does that have a foundation? I guess you had to run your def, your definitions and you look under F, you know, that you define a foundation. The foundation of, of a solder, a ton or two or something, whatever, is that really a foundation?
Those people up in Augusta didn't differentiate of what type of foundation, they just simply said foundation.
Right.
Triggers.
Well, let's just take a quick look, it's, um.
Unless they change the language, you know.
Yeah, well, it says, whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed under a non-conforming structure, the structure and new foundation. So we don't really have, it's not new, it's not enlarged or it's not replaced. They're really just shoring it up with.
But also just. There's gotta be definitions in every ordinance, is there a definition for foundation? There is for set.
Well, I, well, there, there probably is, but as I say, it says whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed. The structure and new foundation must be placed back such that the setback requirement is met to the fullest pract. Stand. So I think since we're we're dealing with really just new tiers. Um, I don't think we need to address that unless other people feel we do.
I don't mean to, uh, add too much to this discussion, but if we were not looking at putting a new deck in the back changing the roof runoff taking off the front deck. If somebody had a home repair project where they could crawl under their house themselves and put new tubes or new piers under there, does that require a conditional use permit? Not adding anything to the lateral dimensional change to the house.
Or as a building permit?
Okay, a building permit.
But you shouldn't have to come here, it would be like.
So a codes officer, if it's, if he's issuing a building permit in the shoreline zone, he's gonna send it to the.
Their house and just.
Gonna send it to the planning board.
If someone wanted to crawl under their house and put some new posts under there, it's a building permit. But we're talking, but we're talking about the dimensional change of the structure in the shoreline zone. You know, change of the rooftops and and some dimensional changes, so that's why it's a conditional use here or for the plant.
Well, plus the activities occurring within their proximity to the lake.
The trouble is, right, codes office bylaws or laws in the book says anything in the shoreline zone that you're doing construction that's changing the the structure or, uh, the foundation of the structure requires a building permit.
Changing it.
Changing it.
Not repairing.
But he's adding to it. This guy's adding to it.
Right.
So it requires a building permit that in itself within two hundred fifty feet by the codes office's description, within a hundred feet of the water consented for the plant.
I'm not trying to be.
No, that, that's just what it says.
So if, if I had a camp, and I live on a Cogged Sea Lake, I live on Cogged Sea, if I had a problem underneath my house and I'm not putting a new foundation on but I have, I'm, I, I have a foundation, but if I had, if I was on piers and I had even one pier that was broken and I needed that repaired, it was not gonna change anything about my roof, my decks, anything else. That should not require all of a sudden, or make me all of a sudden subject to possibly having to move my whole house back because I'm adding a, or replacing a pier or repairing a pier that's failed.
We're not arguing that.
Well.
Yeah.
But that sort of foundation, that's the only foundational work that's being done here is repairing of piers. If you wanna call that foundation. It's, it supports, you know, I don't know.
But he's adding. It, it's not just repairing, what's it? He's adding. He told me right here, I'm putting on the post up to the.
He's adding a deck in the back.
He's putting a post up.
Exactly.
So he's adding.
Proposed deck, yeah.
It requires a building permit?
Oh, send it to the, right, send it to the board. But if he wasn't adding a deck, then Dave, I'm saying.
Yeah.
If he was only doing work beneath the structure that was only the post and not doing any lateral, left, right, north, south, dimensional, up, down, anything. But just.
We're, we're not arguing that, no.
So I think we've decided the, the setback issue isn't, isn't an issue for this matter. Anyone have any questions, comments before we move on? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept this, uh, proposal? Not to accept them. Approve the proposal.
With conditions?
With conditions.
What kind of conditions are we looking at, the placement of the erosion control measures as shown on the plan? Our standard conditions?
Standard conditions. And then he's gonna spell out what he's doing.
You know, obtain building permit.
Yeah.
We're gonna need a permit by rule.
Permit by rule, cuz it's within twenty-five. Yeah, obtain permit by rule.
And I've already told the owner. Wanted it. Yeah, we're moving it. D E P gets a hefty people from the, by rule.
Used to be twenty, twenty-five.
Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
It's been twenty-five bucks.
It was seventy-five.
It went to seventy-five for a while.
Seventy-five, now it's two seventy-five or two eighty.
No, yeah, two eighty-eight in the spring, I hate to see what they've changed to. You, you can get a wet list and fill permit for a lot less.
You wanna nerf a permit, it's four months review time right now, so. Oh, uh, individual permits, four months.
So just permit by rule.
So Paul, you're talking about the erosion control is gonna be, uh, the ECM, the mix, bulge with, uh, then with the tubes, the socks, right?
I, I mean. I'm not, I'm not specifying which one is best, I'm leaving that to the contractors and scratch. But those are the two recommended.
Right. Yeah, so, so that'll work there.
I mean, I use silt fence and I guess you know, I, I use it too loosely, but, uh, but yeah, so I've limited it to those two methods.
Yeah, the thing about the tubes, yeah, the socks by themselves or the tubes by themselves, though. They're not anchored on the ground, you know, erosion control mix will always stay firm to the ground, so you won't be able, runoff won't go underneath it, so.
I don't know if the, and I tend to doubt that the codes officer goes out and checks in, and I don't know if anybody checks those aspects of the building or not, factor. It's the day's month.
It's really who you get. Because the third-party inspectors, there's only one or two that have shoreline on their title.
So.
So it's up to the, up to the guy in the office.
Recommendations on the plan, but I know many projects that they are.
Hey, I know how that works.
All minor inspected. All minor inspected.
Okay, so we have a motion by Larry, is there a second?
I can say it.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving this with the four conditions, erosion control measures as shown on the plan standard planning board conditions, obtain permit by rule from D E P and obtain building permit before initiation of work activity. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Paul, um, my recollection from when we used in the beginning, that we have supposed to record plan and decision for this. I'm not aware of the plan, I mean, I've, I've only had the decisions. Right, you've only.
I, I, I draw in permits, I've never re, but I've never recorded a site plan.
Well, that's what I, I was trying to remember, I meant, I meant to check tonight, uh, before we came, and I didn't bring my I don't think, I don't have it. Not sure, though, this is the most recent popping of the.
I can tell you mine is recorded from my house. Beautiful campaign.
Yeah, um.
Uker.
I thought it was an amendment back a short time ago, I'm not aware of. Take a lot while we're. Yeah.
I know waivers are required to be.
Yeah, waivers.
Ever, you have any notices through professional associations?
Yeah, I just.
I'll double check, I guess.
Just call a registry.
They wanted to know how long it was traveling.
I know if they've recorded.
Well, they know if they're recording something, but they don't know what.
What the rules are, what the rules are.
Recording plans, I guess. Especially with the change in registrar last year, it's tired a lot of staff.
I'm just trying to get in the meeting tonight, there's nothing invited in, so I'm letting her know.
Oh, is he?
She's been waiting twelve minutes to get in, she's been concerned about, primarily the TJ's, uh, uh.
Oh, two people in the waiting room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're not, she, she said she's gonna, she's gonna give up in two more minutes, but I'm letting her know that if the TJ operation has been withdrawn, I can just let her know that she's been.
I think we got everybody.
There she is, Wendy.
All right.
Sorry, Wendy. Sorry, Russ.
We can't see that small print on the screen. Well, I guess I don't see that. I'll double check, so I guess we're.
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, so we'll make a written decision. We'll get it to be moved hopefully. Been ten days, it's all gone.
Tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and file for the.
Ross, you were approved. This, when you ju, you joined in.
Okay, thank you.
And the, uh, anyone interested, the Quins have withdrawn their application for the development on Route two oh two. Alright, so we'll move on to the next matter. This was, um. Lance Rennie and I think, um. Darcy sent out an email. Today that had Dave's prior approval as a code enforcement officer. Lance is requested. Putting on a addition to his. Commercial garage. Was here at the last meeting to discuss that. Anyone have any questions? Do we need to get in touch with them? Are people. Comfortable with the information we have?
I've got a couple of questions. And Dave could probably clear one up. The addition he's proposing. On his diagram, he didn't put any. Dimensions for the setback from the property line. So.
I, I don't have it. So I can't look at it. I don't have that application.
Oh man, I don't know. I don't know what it is. It's, this is not. From the scale, I can tell you that.
Yeah, that's obvious. That's why I'm asking.
Well, he owns quite a bit back.
That distance is probably. Hundred and fifty feet maybe from the back of the existing thirty by forty. And he's only going twenty. So he'd know where it flows to the property.
Yeah, okay.
That's where it starts as well, going down in the tree line, it's back there. So that's pretty far then.
I was saying, look at some of the other dimensions, like, I look at that, it's always not good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's not that close.
Any, any motion on this matter?
Another question. Yes, he was a little short on the. Butter's being notified.
We know it.
My understanding is he was gonna get waivers from some of the neighbors.
Taken care of. Darcy and I sat down and figured out what the butter should have been, should have been, and we sent notices out to everybody.
Fantastic.
So we increased it from three to thirteen. There were a lot of people, even though it's property owners, it's not just built. So we sent it in, but. Good. I don't remember, Darcy, do you remember how many we sent for that one? Quite a bit more.
Don't need another.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think there was probably for him, there was at least five or six. I.
Yeah.
The one that, um, Russ's had, we had to really increase the most on.
Oh, okay, alright. But this one, we did, we did cover everybody.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we didn't leave it up to Lance.
No, we didn't, we didn't leave it up to him. We did it. And they were also posted in the paper.
Yeah, it was a notice in the paper.
Um, should we have him put those measurements on the plan so they're there so we know?
Be on the building permit.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm touch base with, uh, Andy, make sure it's on the building. With that, anything further? Any, any motion?
I guess I will motion that we approve this. Mention, Mr. Rennie.
So we have conditions of obtained building permit.
Standard conditions.
Standard conditions. Erosion control to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer. Destruction.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Alright. So, I think that is all the old business.
Planning board feeds?
No, well, we got new business. I think, I think we should deal with the, uh.
Okay.
The pre-app.
Okay, and then go back to it?
Yeah, go back to it. Um, we just write down. Down the conditions for. Any. Okay. So, um, this is actually a second. Pre-application meeting. I think it was over, you know, in January or?
Uh, I think it was last December.
Maybe, yeah.
And the power outage night. I thought we tried this with light.
Yeah, this is good. I, I figured a preapplication would, that's, I, I think it was a good idea, cause it's been, it's been a year almost.
Um, obviously, it's something that. I don't think Monmouth, the piece of Monmouth's changed much, but I wanted, I just kinda wanted to revisit that with everyone here. Um, I get some plans and we can just.
Why don't you introduce everyone who's here?
Uh, I'm Tom with S F, S F C, Civil Engineering, um, design for the project.
My name is Chris Brannigan. I'm the general manager of the Jellystone Park campground.
Andre Markey, I'm the facilities manager.
Alright, come on up and bring your plan and we'll. Gather round.
Alright. Like, I mean, we got a master plan that we wanted to give you, so you had an overview of everything that was going on. And I brought a few full-size plans, so. And, and I don't think everyone was here when we were here last time.
No, we had a.
I think it was a few of us. I think you were here, you were here. We're, we're, the four out of six, so it, it alright, um. So. Obviously, the, the park doesn't own a lot of land in, in Monmouth to expand in, so. Very similar, uh, we're. Spanning in the southeast corner of the project, um, we're. Staying out of the two hundred and fifty foot buffer, adding a short road, uh, we're gonna have a. A wetland crossing that will be submitting to the state, uh, for permitting. And then we've got, uh, eighteen total. Uh, new sites.
That are in Monmouth.
That are in Monmouth. Um, so. Kinda wanted to show you that, uh, see if, you know, see any concerns that we should be aware of before we. Do a full submittal, uh, the application to the town.
So all the road access is through Monmouth, is that right?
Uh, the, the, the access, the main access is through Wilson Pond Road. The, the expansion piece is gonna be off existing roads within the park.
But this will increase the traffic load on.
Yeah, well, we, we are, we have a traffic, um. Consultant and we'll be submitting that with the application. So we have that information we'll provide as well.
So Mark Burgess here is a select person. I don't know what you hear, Mark, about. Traffic to the campground in and out.
We, we, we just got a report a few weeks back. Um, from the police department about the number of vehicles that traveled down that road and it would be in the records. From that select board meeting. But they did monitor the traffic flow and it was pretty significant, three, four thousand cars a day, I think, in the summer time. Um. Four or five times the traffic that would be in the off-season.
So that's not all to the campground, but just, just using that. Road.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, uh, just, we've, 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 we've have a consultant for, for traffic and we'll, we'll provide the information that they have. Um, with, with the, with the application.
I believe the information we got was from. The speeds, signs, monitors, traffic. Average speed and it calculated how many cars pass it during the day and.
Makes sense.
Came from.
So is, is that street sign located on?
They move it all around, but it, it was on Wilson Pond Road.
It was on Wilson Pond, okay, I thought it was on, uh, Backstreet.
There was one on Backstreet too.
They have a pool of them and they move all over time. But in that period of time that they studied that, it was on Wilson Pond Road for several weeks.
Where on Wilson Pond?
I don't know exactly where it was located. You'd have to contact the police department to find out where exactly it was located.
I believe it was right on the corner of Ward and Wilson Pond.
That far down.
And it might have included Ward. I'm not sure in the traffic setting. No, it turned out.
Steve, I found the, I found the minutes. I keep all the minutes, so there were six hundred and forty-eight vehicles when they put the, the, uh, speed monitor up. It didn't say the total, or I didn't recall, no, I did. Uh, six hundred and forty-eight vehicles were tracked with an average speed of th- thirty-six point five eight. Um. And there were two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven vehicles with an average of thirty-two miles an hour that were going down Wilson Pond Road and this was done. This was from the August ninth meetings.
Was, it was twenty-six hundred. Whole cars.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how long they had the sign there, whether it was for a few days. He didn't specify if it was there for a week or a few days. But it was right where the thirty-five mile an hour zone is.
That was, that was done this past summer or?
August, August.
August of this, this year is when it was reported.
Yeah, so it was prior to the August.
Yeah, so.
And I think they. Just, just so you guys know, it was all within the study for the new culvert that's. Has to go in. To cross right by you.
Yep, okay, yep.
Alright, so it, so it's three to four thousand over a period of time, no? Not daily?
No, no, not daily.
That number is tremendous. If that was the, if that was the customers we're bringing in, then yeah, that would be wonderful.
We're not, we're not seeing it. We're not seeing them. They're not seeing it on our end of the road. They're going somewhere.
That was a seven-day period, August one through August eighth.
Okay, that gives us a little more. I thought there might be something.
Yep.
So again, how many, how many new sites in Monmouth?
Eighteen.
Oh, we're proposing eighteen.
Eighteen. And what's the usual size of those sites?
Uh.
Are they, are they camping? Are they for the mobile vehicle or?
It's a mix.
It's, it's a mix of park models and, and RV sites.
So the park models are permanent, well, semi, stationary.
How big are the sites?
Uh, the sites, uh, for town, town standards is five, five thousand square feet. So fifty by hundred.
So each one of these are fifty by hundred?
Yeah, the, the lots, the slight size, yeah.
Are there other new sites going in that are not in Monmouth also? Or is it, yeah, only sites, new sites you're putting in or?
Uh, we're, we're, we're here in Leeds as well. We're meeting with them late, later this month.
I'm just thinking of the traffic flow, was there?
Yep, yeah, we're, the, the traffic study, the traffic study we have done is for the, the master plan.
So are there minimum? You know, just in terms of your general practice, are there minimum stays that you require people have to? Reserve for two days, three days, or?
It's a two-night minimum throughout the season. If it's within the same week, we do allow one day booking, so like. If you book it outside of a week, it's a minimum of two. Holidays are three. Um, but again, within that last week, if there's empty sites, you know, hey, people can book them for a while.
I know Wayne at one point had proposed more restrictive. Limits on the. Campgrounds. Uh, I don't know whether that ever passed. I only know that from the prior owner. From some work. And not doing anything. They got no new sites in Wayne.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're. Currently kind of, we're in discussions with Wayne on, on. Interpretation, the orders and whatnot, so it's.
It's, it's not the most architected role.
Don't, no, so we're kind of. We're working through that to see, see what's, what's going to be allowed, what's not going to be allowed.
How is the project, um. Going, trying to get another exit or entrance?
Uh, we've been approved for our entrance, the improvements to the entrance already there down there, it's, and we've got, has a permit in the state.
To get into Leeds?
No, no. One, one entry, we're utilizing the.
You're not, you're not looking at getting a, a secondary entrance or e- exit?
The only thing that might happen is a, uh, we might have like a, a fire. A fire, there's an existing road on the backside of the park that might be. Utilized as, you know, for emergency purposes only. But that, that's already an existing. It's gated right now and. It might have to have some.
So it's Monmouth or nothing? Monmouth entrance or nothing?
It is, yeah.
Seems like that puts us in the. Ted Bird seat here. I know there's a lot of talk. There's a lot of talk going on in the town of Monmouth and we're spending a, we're gonna have to go to a. A referendum. To approve monies for this culvert that's costing. Way, way more than we thought it was ever gonna cost to put in, um, with no benefit to Monmouthonians. I think this plan would have a hard time passing.
Fortunately, it takes our empty. Uh, low tax rate land and adds value to it, which increases, uh, tax revenue to the town.
Yeah, but on the size of things, it's, you know, miniscule. Compared to the rest. I'm just throwing things out of what I've heard.
And the reason I brought up the traffic is, over the years, you know. Talk around town. You know, some people complain about, uh, you know, cause you've got big vehicles coming through and. You know, when this gets. Before the board, on a formal basis, you might hear from more residents who express concern. And so that's just good for you to know in terms of your. Your planning and how to approach it, um. It's hard to mitigate because in some ways, because. Say, that's the only way in, um, we don't have a lot of.
Yeah, they're, they're not changing, yeah.
There's not a lot of options. The Ward Road is not. I'm assuming not very many. Uh, RVs come down that road to access. I think most of them are coming. Via two oh two. Uh, or. Road through, uh. By Mount Piska, Mount Piska Road or whatever it is. Which isn't a great road either, you know.
So from what, where I'm sitting, you know, what you're, what you're asking for on the plan is not. Anything out of the ordinary here where, you know, it, it.
No, I mean, we're, we're basically proposing a, a short access road off of the existing access road. Does that excite? So it's, it's, it's fairly straightforward, I think. But, you know, as you indicated when we talked to you last year, it, the traffic is, is a.
That's a big concern, I think, for a lot of people who live in that area, that's, uh. You know, over the years, the campground has grown. Uh, even before, you know, Jellystone bought it and. That's.
The price to pay for expansion.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've had a, they've had a state, they have a state permit existing for up to two hundred and twenty sites, so they, they, they don't even have that.
They haven't reached that, but it, as I say, it, they, they did some work in there over the years to, you know, they put some park models in, they. You know, but it.
Park models are your best option.
Of those new sites, only two, four, five. Of those new sites, only two, four, five of them are, RV sites. So it's really only an extra five RVs, the rest of our, our, our park models.
You know, even. Wilson Pond sees, uh, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, other ones that are still gonna be traveling, more up Wilson Pond Road, you know, that, you know, they're there, they're in Leeds.
Right, yeah.
David, where's that culvert going that you're talking about? Probably right about where Country Road is on this map.
Yep, yep, right there.
It's where, it's right near, it's right at that Leeds-Monmouth line, town line.
Right where the word country is, that's, it's, it's water coming from Cenderskagen, uh, to, from Wilson Pond.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we offered that one, one lane of traffic all summer.
Because it was under,
Yep, yep.
Under direct. For the whole summer. But now they're talking about putting in a box culvert in and they have to close it for a week. I don't know. They're, they're working with you guys, trying to figure out a good time to, to close the road.
Is that scheduled? Is that been scheduled?
No, I, I, it's not scheduled and, and I don't know if it is gonna be scheduled. There's the money issue.
The window of opportunity, I think they said, was September to October. Uh, it was July fifteenth through September thirtieth.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, after essentially peaks. And I think what they were looking at, knowing what your season was, they were looking at right after Labor Day.
Essentially, yeah, the day after Labor Day, hopefully we can try to start.
Three-week thing to get it done before the end of the period.
Right.
Is what they were proposing. But it's gotta be put out to the voters again, and that'll happen in the spring, when we vote in June. And if it approves, I think they were talking about next fall.
Yes.
I assume they're just kind of patching what is needed. And it, because it, it does show a fair amount of, erosion, so it's.
It's open to flames now.
Oh, yeah, it's, well, it's.
Yeah, they've been, they've been taking care of it. They've been filling it.
Yeah.
We don't have in our ordinance any impact fees, you know, there, there's been discussion about that, you know, if a development, business causes, you know, extraordinary, cost to the town, should there be an impact fee? We don't have any, anything built in now. But.
But there's talk.
But there's talk. But I think, you know, I mean, we're just talking loosely here, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, if, if the developer wanted to say, hey, we're willing to contribute something toward, the road improvement, that might give you some traction, to offset some of the concerns that people have. But again, that's all voluntary on your part. And, you know, that's not gonna influence, you know, our, our decision really, but it, you know, uh, depending what people say, you know, we didn't, we're not hearing, directly what their complaints are yet. I mean, they may come in, but I just throw that out.
No, I mean, we, we certainly can have that discussion internally and see.
Yeah, we've had, we've started discussions.
Yeah, I mean, that, on an application meeting, it's the only time we get to really, tell you what, you know, what, what the concerns are without you having to hear it, straight faced from, from a citizen.
Well, it's, it's good to hear it.
That's what we figured and we wanna let you know what could be coming, hopefully not, but, you know. But as far as the project itself.
Yeah, I think what you're proposing within Monmouth isn't, you know, isn't a stretch.
We can, we can run through the process.
But we have to consider, I think, the impact of the whole development that you propose, on the traffic issue since Monmouth bears all that traffic. You know, so that, you know, so it's kind of a two, two-part thing in a way. Yeah, what you're proposing within, seems reasonable, but what is the overall impact on?
Are we going to, are, are we gonna go to Leeds planning meetings?
Well, we, we could. I mean, we've never had any luck with Wayne wanting.
I know, not Wayne, but Leeds we have.
Leeds we have.
These are the same one.
You know, and, you know, that entity unto themselves. Yeah. I mean, you know, this could be reviewed jointly if,
if Leeds wants it, you know, we could, we could do this all in one, one shot.
So that overlaps, but it's again up to you and, I mean, I think Leeds might wanna hear what concerns Monmouth has.
Is that something that you, you're saying you considered like one application in that?
Well, you make an application to each town, each town, and then we propose, that we have some kind of joint, you know, at least a joint meeting so that.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Explain it once, not twice.
Yeah, and you're gonna have, I mean, the, the public, I think you're gonna have a similar, you know,
Yeah.
cut, coming out from either, either meeting. So I, I think that makes a lot of sense to me.
Or a combination thereof.
Is that, so that's, that's something we could suggest when we submit the application or request to kind of.
Have a, have a joint. Work that out, I think.
I think that would, that would, we would, definitely, be open to that idea. That's, seems like a great idea.
Anyone else have questions, comments, or?
Um, do you know if the, um, highway department, do they, uh, put calcium on the, on that road during? And there's some to keep the dust down. That's complaints I've heard.
I believe they do.
They do.
Yeah, they do.
Is that some of the complaint, you know, I don't know how long it lasts when they do it, but complaints I've heard from townspeople is the dust is real bad.
It's so bad this year, it was really wet.
Drive ages in a row.
They only put it down once this year.
They did, yeah, probably didn't need to, yeah.
Yep. How many camp sites do you currently operate there?
It's like two oh nine for the cabins.
So it really hasn't gone up significantly. I worked there in nineteen eighty-six and eighty-seven, and there was a hundred and eighty sites then. So it really hasn't grown. How many sites are you proposing for Leeds in the overall? Have a number for that?
Uh, yep, uh, per Leeds, we're proposing.
Two.
Yep.
There's gonna be another eighty-five.
Yeah, so we, they were originally permitted for two twenty, we're, we're proposing, two eighty-six. So we're increasing.
It could be going from two oh nine to two ninety, roughly.
Really?
Yep.
We would love to have a hundred percent capacity every week, every weekend. Love to have all two ninety filled, but.
Potentially is growing by twenty-five, twenty-eight percent.
But, and, yeah, the, the overall project and, and Monmouth is growing by, eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From what? Zero, from zero.
Yeah.
Uh, there, there are a few.
Four existing.
Yep.
Four existing.
Yeah, there's some, there's some poultry sites, so.
So what's your plan? When do you think you'd be filing an application?
Um, we're, optimistically thinking the, the, the.
So we, you know, under our rules, we, we have kind of a, a deadline, which would be like the, the Tuesday of the week before our meeting. Yeah.
It's about ten days.
It's around ten days. And then,
Yep.
Uh, and generally, you know, we just, accept an application. Then we have to, at a later meeting, we may determine that it's complete or tell you what else might be needed.
Yep.
Um.
We're assuming it's a, a two-minute.
Yeah, generally, I'd say. Yeah, you know, we advertise and give people.
Yeah, so when is your, I don't know when the December.
Second Thursday?
It's fourteenth.
All right, so we would have.
I think it's the last day, it could be.
Yeah. We don't predict that, roughly by the, the December fourth range.
Yeah. Right now, well, we may have something else coming in that's gonna be somewhat controversial, but.
I'll squeeze those in first.
Yeah. Well, you never know. Sometimes we hear a lot and then no one shows up. Sometimes we hear nothing and a lot of people show up, so it's. Any other questions for us, or?
No, uh, yeah, like I said, I, I think it, it's, a similar proposal as we talked about last December, but I, certainly kind of wanted to, to bring it before you, where it's been, been a while.
Yeah, that's an idea, I think.
And we, I, I figured we'd have a few more, board members.
Yeah, if you wanna, took the same, just flick the light switch.
I think we use that camera, camera phone.
Yeah.
But yeah, no. I think, uh, I think. The, 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 it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's just the overall impact of traffic.
That's your hot, that's your hot.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
For coming in.
Whatever, it's fairly similar thing. You were the story, uh, slowly.
Someone took out a telephone, what happened? I'll just bring you up to date, the, uh, rules and regulations that we updated, after the last select board meeting, and I think they were okayed. So we have our new rules. You can follow.
Are they gonna be put on the town website?
Well, we'll have to, yeah, I think Darcy can do that with Lori, figure that out.
I don't need Lori, I can do it.
Good. Hey. Um. So I, I can maybe make some copies if the copy machine is working, but I.
Have you got a piece of that?
Well, I, what I did is I copied, you know, three different local towns. And I might be able to identify them later. Um. No, I'm sort of surprised. I, I thought a lot of local towns, would have, higher fees, some I couldn't find. Uh, I don't think I could find Winthrop's, way ordinance is set up. And would have to call somebody. But, you know, the concern we had was our fees hadn't really been updated in a number of years. And we did make the change, which allows, the select board to set fees so that we don't have to take it to a vote every time. Know that that was really necessary, so. You know, look in, I'll wait till Dave comes back, though. Yep.
Um, when, was here, whenever he was here, he said something about, people living in buildings across from him. Does anybody remember that? Do you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, and I go that way a lot because I'm going to the milkhouse. And there are like three little, buildings, like, sheds, you know, like Sabathis has a place where you can go and buy, outbuildings and things. I mean, that's, they're, they're little. And I remember him saying that there were people living in there. Do you remember that?
He said.
Yeah. It just kind of stuck with me. And I wonder what, what do, what do you do with that information?
I would say it should go to code enforcement, because it's not a habitable structure. If there's no plumbing or.
It's hard to say, it's hard to tell. But they just look like those little, little tiny buildings that you, get if you wanted to put in your driving mower and.
Dave may know more. But it sounds like a code enforcement thing to me. I know they have one they're dealing with, um, in town currently. It was a mobile home that got removed and the addition was still there, and the people continue to live in the addition.
Hmm.
Um, and there's no running water, um, they, they may know.
It's print.
I, yeah, I remember we were waiting and I remember, um, Lance talking about these, buildings that were across the road from him. Pretty small little buildings, like, like I said, like a shed that you'd get to put your riding mower in or something.
Mm-hmm.
And he said that there were people living there. And I, it's just kind of.
There, there is a minimum square footage for habitable space. Uh, I don't know if, uh, you know, the codes officer would be the one to, to go and investigate, see whether they're legal habitable spaces or not.
Okay, I, I just.
What is the minimum square footage? Yeah, changed. Just changed to, two hundred, two hundred and sixty or two hundred and sixty-five or, something.
I mean, there, there's, you know, that new wave of, of small houses.
Yeah, it's a tiny house.
The tiny house.
But it has to meet certain requirements.
I, I would, I'm sure it does. It, I don't know, I just, I look every time I go by and just, hmm.
I haven't noticed them. I never noticed. Maybe I just thought they were their storage buildings.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, well, I look, those are the only things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've driven by, I haven't seen any activity.
I haven't either. I haven't either, but it just kind of, bo- bothers me, you know, a little, you know, people are, living there. Okay, well.
People are buying like lots of time, but whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
Compared to, to living spaces.
Living spaces or, or.
That's a no way.
These are the fees.
Yeah. These are.
Oh, okay. They're actually.
The staple is empty. So we just put them all together.
So the, uh, so we have like currently, like the shoreline permit fee, you know, when they originally were set, like the shoreline fee, we set at a base fifty, and then we said we'd, we'd add a, a fee based on the size of the project. I think we backed off that saying, well, you know, when they get their building permit, they're really paying a more, significant fee and, you shouldn't double up on, on the fees. So we've been, really just basing ours on, kind of a flat fee. And, uh, then, so the question is, what, what do we do da- now? And do we distinguish, between, someone like this gentleman who came in tonight that, you know, wanted to do, shore up his building and, and put the decks around the back instead of the front, as opposed to, someone putting in a subdivision that also impacts, the shoreline or, an expansion, say, by Kipowa or Camp Cob, see, you know, is there, you know, do we set a fee, kind of based on the, you know, two fees, one-on-one type of project, and then another fee that is for larger projects? Um.
Well, I, I, I think we, we cut down the price because the, building permit fees were so high, uh, because they included inspections by the, codes enforcement officer. Now, they're all pretty standard and quite low because, there is no, there's no time involved between girls in the office and the codes officers processing permits anymore. It's all done with a push button on a, on. So if the intent is to make the fees comparable to the work involved in processing applications, I don't know if Darcy can probably e- even now give us some idea how much more time or less time it takes to process a minor to a major. Uh, yeah, there's more more mailings that have to go out, but the, the fee to the newspaper is the same, whether it's for a small one or a large one. Uh, unless you want to advertise more, uh, you know, get it out, but I, I personally don't think we need to advertise it in paper at all anymore, I don't know if anybody ever looks at it anymore. Two hundred and thirty dollars or whatever it is to put it in the paper, it's crazy.
David was, uh, on average, a hundred and fifty per.
Hundred and fifty?
Per, for those site visit ones that I posted.
I mean, if it's online, it's on the town website. I think that's yeah, that's where it's getting out there, Facebook.
Yeah, and I think, I think too, we need to change how we send notices to abotters, I don't know that it really makes a difference doing certified mail, which costs so much.
And none of them showed up.
Yeah. Uh, you know, in some nights we do. But, um, I see some of the towns charge, I think it, it, it's like two dollars for each notice to an aboter. You know, whether we would increase that a little bit.
Is there a legality thing versus certified mail versus regular mail?
Well, no, it's, it's based on, I think, what the ordinance says, and I think our ordinance is say certified mail, which has gone from probably four dollars to, to over ten dollars now.
Yeah.
So, so whatever we choose to do, we need to go change the ordinance.
We need to change the ordinance on, on it.
That, that, the select board has the authority to change all fees, that's in the ordinance now. So we could submit a, something to the selectmen, they could review it and change the ordinances. You know, on the spot, because that, we gave them the right to do that last time we did this.
On the fees.
On the fees.
But the mailing and all that.
Well, the mailings and all that, we have to change.
If we change our process, we have.
Processes have to be going through the order.
So the, the one that's not labeled what town it is, is Bowdoin here. I didn't look, you know, I looked at about five or six different towns. Um, Reed, Reedfield and Wayne have the same uh, code enforcement officer, so I think he is probably claims the fees in those towns similarly, if, if you see, they're both the same and. But I don't see clearly there what, what planning board fees, you know, it's, it's building permit fees, let's say. Then they have conditional use and site land fees. And, you know, that's, that may not be a bad arrangement based on the value of the project, because they're not. I mean, I kind of, when I did a draft a couple of months ago, I kind of did that similarly, that you know, if we got a million dollar project, yeah, they'd pay a higher amount, here they have seven hundred and fifty. And then if it's something under a hundred thousand, it's a hundred fifty. Subdivision. They've got two fifty for a minor. Major's two fifty, but they they do seventy-five for a site.
What's the definition of emerging?
I think it's, is it more than five?
It's, it's five or less.
Okay.
Um, so right now we have a hundred plus fifty for the minor, I'd say.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, let's see, two hundred plus fifty a lot.
Right.
So I don't know that we distinguish between uh, we do major or minor.
It was just cheaper.
Um, you know, so it may be that base fees only need to be increased somewhere between twenty-five and fifty dollars and then if we do on-site reviews, um, some kind of sliding scale similar to what Reedfield and Wayne are doing. That's gonna help cover a lot of our administrative expense. Lights, the copying. Darcy. Maybe some extent the code enforcement officer, it's gonna give a little more and it's I don't know. I mean, yes, it's and it puts some cost on the person who's applying, you don't want to make it excessive, but I think I don't think the fees like certainly a project like Jellystone, I mean, this is a big company, they can bear that cost better than somebody who's just doing a little work on their shorefront cottage, but. You hear complaints, Mark, about what, what the town charges for fees?
I really don't, um, especially now. I mean, I used to hear about building permits, you know, someone wanted a new home, fifteen hundred dollars and and then another, I don't know how, five, six, seven hundred for plumbing permit. You know, you can get a couple thousand dollars in permit fees wrapped up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Um, but lately I haven't.
I think they, they're saying it's better.
You, you have a third-party inspector that you pay now, as, as you know, but it's still less than what it was before.
Yes, it is.
Quite a bit less, more aligned with other towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's tough, you know, without the code officer. But I think personally, and I'm biased, but I think it's easier for the contractors to deal with third parties.
Absolutely, more, you know, more available, you know.
More available.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I used to work five days just so I could do inspection, you know, come in on Fridays and work with the contractors, because that was the only day I didn't have public, I could deal with contractors. So that's when these guys came in to see me. Or you always wanted to get an inspection before weekend. I don't know. I don't think we should be high and excessively high, I think we should be, look at middle of the road and, you know, Wayne and Reedfield are, are good.
Mm-hmm.
A, a good center uh, you know, to work with. I think anytime that you can leave, you know, when you say as needed or cost varies or that leaves it up in the air.
Well, there's a sentence right at the end, I think this is Reedfield, yeah. Reedfield, where it says additional fees may also be charged for hearing costs such as printing, mailing, newspaper notices, professional services deemed necessary. Um, and so if.
Yeah.
If that's added and then if our fees are similar, yeah, Reedfield to me is a lot like one. In, in ways. It's got a lake and it's got all those other kinds of things. Is there anything specific, I, I'm I'm looking.
You want to be square foot base or, or?
No, I, I, I kind of, as I said, I, I like.
With what base or cost?
Yeah, I like the, um, the idea on the site plans of what Reedfield and Wayne have.
Mm-hmm.
That it would be based on the size of the project, now we, we could even put in an intermediary up to fifty thousand and say seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
And you know, but that's a um, you know, it's, it's just like on, on, you know, we, we've approved two solar projects and our fees were probably very low for those projects. You know, so we may even put you know, a million five. To, you know, we may go up even further. I mean, I don't know how many more solar projects, I know there's some land under contract in Bonvent for solar projects, but auctions.
You can just put every five hundred over a million is two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For every five hundred over.
Yeah.
So it goes on to a finish.
Yeah.
The chat group on the projects, they're moving forward, I see all the stakes were gone and.
There's nothing there and they hate it.
They, uh, months or two ago, they asked, they got their entrance permit for their road. And they got a nine-one-one address, I think, from Andy. So I don't know when they plan to break ground.
Um, there's no evidence of roadwork at all.
Well, they may be waiting for the spring at this point, I don't know.
And they could have pulled the stakes for the hay in season, I guess. But yeah, all the stakes were gone.
Yeah. But if they wait until the spring, I mean, how long do you have the permit? We, we do the permit.
A year, a year. But they don't have to come back to us, they can extend it for another year.
Okay. Well, okay.
No, I, I understand they're, they're still planning to go, I mean, they sent me an email, but just to kind of move those two items there. Road permit and their entrance permit. Not, they needed a nine-one-one address.
You, what are you planning on doing, just trying to copy?
Well, I mean, I just, I, I think, I, I think for these site plan review.
Yeah.
We, we use their, you know, we might put an intermediary up to fifty.
Yeah.
And say that would be they would say that's a hundred.
Yeah.
And then for every five hundred thousand over a million, two hundred more, two hundred more. And then I think, um, on shore land.
Uh, where is the?
On shore land, we'd say the base permit is seventy-five. And if the value or the cost of the project is over a hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That we would double that.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, I don't know in shore land whether we're gonna have any other than you know, cutting out the campgrounds. I mean, I suppose we could say if it's all over two fifty.
There is one that has playgrounds on it.
Which one is that? Oh, that's, yeah, that, that's probably Wayne. It's the second phase of Wayne, man.
Give it to me.
Yeah, I did. Oh yeah, here it is. Initial permit fee. This is campground renewal permit.
Yeah, but you know, you could have a campground period.
Yeah.
You're gonna have one on Packer Road, right?
Potentially.
Potentially, that's all shore land. Let's put it this way, Kipewa would have done their expansion, whether we charged them fifty dollars a lot or five hundred dollars a lot, they were gonna get that campground.
Yeah.
And they just bought another eighteen acres.
Did they close on it? I heard they were looking. Was it one of the old Woolworths buildings? Uh, then there's the Board of Appeals, I don't know if we have that in. Board of Appeals.
Hundred dollar fee.
Yeah, but I don't know if we have it in ours, I think we left it in.
Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Could be accompanied by a non-refundable fee of twenty-five dollars.
Right.
That's pretty low.
Yeah. A lot of work for that board for twenty-five dollars.
Plus the cost of mailing, so. I mean, again, they have one fifty. Those wa- fees may be waived by select or due to need, you probably don't want people coming in. I don't know. Well, let's, let's go back, I think we're all set for site review. Shoreland seventy-five as a base.
Yeah.
If the project is over a hundred thousand, we're gonna double it.
Right.
If it's over two hundred thousand, make it three hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah. That be the ceiling or do we want?
Well, you could do the same thing, anything over a certain amount, add under it.
Yeah. For every hundred thousand.
For every hundred thousand or every fifty thousand, I don't care.
I mean, we're not seeing very many.
Not seeing big ones.
It's mostly renovations, I mean, we have a few tear downs.
Yeah.
There's not very many lots that are undeveloped in shore land.
Few, but not that many. Usually bad ground.
Yeah. Then just bump our subdivision fees up a little bit.
Yeah, because we, we haven't seen it at eighteen percent, they're not gonna.
Well, I can type something up and we can review it at the December meeting.
And then send it.
Yeah.
Mark, you can say something at the select board if they want any input. Uh, contact us and we'll, we'll work with them, you know, or at the December meeting.
Okay.
Or is the fee?
Yeah, if they have any specific concerns, let us know, we can, while we're typing it up, we can do it. So it doesn't have to go to you for, you know, back and forth.
Well, you know, from my perspective, it's to help help cover some of these administrative costs that we've got.
And at the same time, we have to look at the legality of posting it in the paper or not posting it in the paper.
Yeah, that's kind of a bigger question.
Yeah.
Whether we do eliminate certified mail.
I still see it in, you know, the advertiser, you know, there are towns that still do it there, but then.
Yeah, and, and some put in the, I mean, Winthrop uses the advertiser, which is probably cheaper, but the problem is he doesn't always publish.
Right.
Kind of a.
And if it's in there, it's in there for six months. We all know the pitfalls of the advertising.
Well, and I, and as I say, we're trying to do a better job getting stuff on the calendar that people can come in and see what's going on. As you may have heard, uh, Lake Star on one thirty-five is filed pa- I, I think they dropped off papers last week. Uh, they came in, I don't know if you, everyone remembers, they're over Steel Frost Farm on one thirty-five, what's the road that goes down there? Goes down to the lake, um, Larry Seer, I think, developed some lots down there. It's a camp road, but it's pretty sort of the first, it's the first big camp road after the church. Or town, I think. Um, already there's been some people asking. The Anabesakook Lake Association is very concerned about it.
Birchwood.
Birchwood Drive, yeah. Um, so I haven't seen I don't think Darcy's been in yet to see what got filed, but Andy said something that did get dropped off in his office, but it was out the day it got dropped off.
He didn't say anything to me.
Yeah, so I don't think it came in you know, before our deadline, so. You know, before our deadline, so that would be on the December agenda.
Probably almost finished the farmhouse.
Yeah. And I think they got. They may have gotten a permit for one house further down. No, they didn't apply for it.
They did. They got turned down.
Oh, how come?
Because I wouldn't allow it going in. This is what they wanted to do, needed to come to the board.
Okay.
There was too much roadway, too much driveway, too much, too close to the water, all of that.
Yeah.
It was gonna be her house.
Right, yeah.
And she wanted to take all the trees down so she could view it. I said. This is not something that Andy wants to approve.
Yep. Um. I sent to the town manager. A proposed contract for Isabel, can't remember her last name, the. Person that would work on the comp plan. And. I gotta follow up with, uh, Justin next week to see if you didn't that get approved. Well, he got the, apparently he has the authority to approve. I I think the. I think the select board was fine.
Put it off on.
It it was to pay.
He had ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Worth of the thirty something that he needed and he agreed to start the project and get the other twenty thousand.
Yeah, he did have it in June.
So I think my last communication was Isabel, Isabel was that she'd suggested a meeting. Maybe the first week of December, so I have to see what. What the calendar looks like, what night we could meet.
Cool. Get that back.
Get that back and hopefully get that wrapped up. So that's all I have. So if anyone. Questions, comments. Anyone still up there? Darcy, you there all alone?
I don't hear all alone.
How are you feeling?
Yeah, like shit.
Oh, no. Oh, dear. Well, I hope you get better.
Oh, I will, I will. I'm just feeling tired now. My fever broke at about noon time and all I've been doing is cooking.
All right, go to bed. You can, you can leave us. We're done.
All right, are we adjourning then?
Both in adjourned. Second.
Who seconded?
We're adjourned.
Who seconded?
Grant.
Do you have any concerns, Mark, about?
I just came because I agreed to be part of the.
Yeah. So. Yeah.
Wanted to make an appearance. It seems like everything I want.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, I'll look at the town calendar. You could look at it right now. Me, that's a good idea. See what that calendar looks like. Don't know what the schedule of the. Select board is. And if that's an off week. There are other groups using this room. It was nice to see the voting here. Since we don't have to do all the spacing.
Do you remember how many voted? Because it was pretty brisk when I was here. Well, you know, you were here.
I didn't get the total numbers.
It's it's right on this page. On this page.
Voting numbers. I got the email. I didn't do the math to figure out how many actual.
So the Annabessakook, Annabessakook Lake Association is meeting here on December sixth.
Hmm.
Ah. Back. Oh, that's on a Wednesday, not on a Thursday. Um, Thursday. Compton Hall trustees meeting, but I think they're meeting at Compton.
Do they?
Compton, so we could meet here on the seventh.
Hmm, December seventh.
Thursday, December seventh. Maybe meet at six, six thirty, is that, or six? What do people, what would people like, six thirty?
This one, it probably won't be a long one.
Yeah, it's just to get.
Just to get, yeah, everybody on board.
Why don't we make it six where it's dark and cold?
Well, it's just getting supper. Yeah, let's do six thirty.
Right.
See what she said.
Yeah, I'll see what she says. You might be busy on Thursday.
Yeah, no, she told me that was a good, well, actually, she gave me some data. Let me just see if I can. Find her email, last email. Just to make sure I'm not.
I say after four twenty now, it's darkening up.
Yeah.
Yeah, three thirty is. If it's cloudy out.
Yeah. Dark or bright.
Uh.
I was really surprised. The little bit that fell, it just, it stayed. It didn't go away.
It will fall.
I, yeah, I know. The sun's coming. That's a good.
Yeah, she said the the week after Thanksgiving. So that would maybe mean December, December first, rather than Sep or something.
Hmm.
December. Number twenty-ninth is a Wednesday.
That's a short word.
That's a select. So maybe the seventh is, I'll I'll check with her.
Check it.
I'll check with her. Read if the seventh works. I'll let everybody know.
Once we get on a set schedule, it's easier.
Yeah.
Everybody can work on it.
Is the best way to email you, Mark, the town email or rather than a private one?
Okay, yep. Send me regular basis.
All right.
No, I forget what this was set at. Sixty-five.
Yeah, I did so.
When is sixty?
At H M H, I flew the.
Rick, were they concerned about how much the site work would be?
Cost, yeah, that and and site costs and I've kind of told them all along, but. Give them some numbers, real numbers and, yeah.
Mitigation fee, that was gonna be quite expensive.
Well, that was to be determined, right? We really don't know, so.
Yeah, but that, all that is you would take one look at it.
Right.
But you know it was gonna be up there.
Yeah, everything else too.
Yeah, it's. I mean, it would be a good location, but that site is just so wet.
Yep.
You think of the golden, the new place from the restaurant.
They were, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lease is the, the end of, end of December, isn't it?
I think, I don't know if they actually have a lease.
Not a month.
I think it's monthly, monthly right now, I think. It's not really. Be too bad to lose it in town. There's not many places.
No.
I guess the guy, the last thing you see.
Yeah.
Take one, just stick it in there.
Everybody take care.
Yeah. Um. Maybe once he gets dropped off, what's going on?
I think Darcy's. Darcy, did you?
I think. Well, you can always.
I can always drop mine off.
And I can drop this one off. I don't.
I don't need it. I just don't want to leave it.
Yeah.
Too many zippers on the free case.
Too many zippers.
Yeah, oh, this is.
Stop that.
That was from. Um. Roz Zinsky. All right, so little snow, did your, did I get your motor running?
Yeah, it's ready to go. I'm ready to go.
Oh, there's snow up north again.
Yeah, there's.
Getting the the pack, the bottom base. If it doesn't rain and it stays hard packed snow, it'll last, but.
You know, that's the whole thing now is. You get all these.
Project outlook for us is pretty bad. We're supposed to be, uh. Have a warm winter again.
Yeah.
El Nino.
Oh, that's why I gotta get rid of that. All right, all right.